Angie, we want to do a sound check. Can you tell us if you're getting this in here pretty good?
I can hear you now. Yes.
Perfect. All right, thanks. Okay, it is six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. It is November 18th, 2025 at the Mill in Lake Stevens. It's a city council special meeting, so we'll go and get started. Could you please join me? Nope, nevermind. This call to orders ahead of Pledge of Allegiance tonight? Okay, then we get a roll call, Clerk Chellin. First, sorry, I was thinking roll call, not caller. Apologies. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance.
Off to a great start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible and for the routine justice for all.
Okay, if I could please get a roll call, Clerk Chellin.
Absolutely. All right, Councilmember Dotteri?
Present.
Councilmember Petershagen?
Present.
Councilmember Donahue?
Present.
Councilmember Shipman?
Present.
Councilmember Jorstad online?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ewing?
Present.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
All right, and then I will send it over to Councilmember Shipman for approval of the agenda.
Okay, could I get an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? No, still moved.
All in favor?
Yeah. Oh, all in favor?
Hi.
Those, those not in favor? Okay, so now it's approved.
We've got an agenda, great. All right, that takes us to guest business. So first, let's see if there's, or...
Yeah, my apologies, no guest business.
No guest business, okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to citizens comments, we'll go ahead and check anybody online or get to the green sheets.
Let me just take a look. So as Council President Donahue mentioned, if you are online on Zoom and you would like to speak to the council right now during citizen comments, please raise your digital hand and I can bring you into the meeting. Not seeing any hands.
Okay, go ahead and read our first green sheet. It looks like maybe there's a second one coming from the back of the room too, just FYI. So first one I've got is Mr. Tom Hanson, like to speak about the stormwater master plan and future project. So Tom, yeah, come step on up here and you've got three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember, I appreciate it. I'd like to be allowed potential future projects for the city called Stormwater Master Plan. I'm a recent resident of the city and taking a look at what stormwater information you have available to the public. And I think I find it lacking for my perspective. It's a lot of good information, but there's more needed. We don't have, you don't have a modeling of what stormwater flows are hitting the city system. Other words, looking at what coming out of the basins and sub-basins and going into the catch basins and the storm drains and the culverts. The other thing that you're lacking information on is what the capacity are is of the pipes in the network. And how the pipes flow and how much stormwater accumulates as it heads downstream. This is helpful for not only staff to have this information so they truly understand the system. But as development happens and development connects to your stormwater system, you can quickly determine what the downstream impacts are, which is critical for managing your system. In addition, by having this master plan, you can identify issues throughout the system. You can identify projects, you identify capacity issues, condition of your infrastructure. Is the pipe working still? Is it collapsed? Is it partially collapsed? Is it plugged? Is the catch basin adequate in size? Are there environmental problems with the pipe? For instance, fish crossings, which is a big deal now with wash dock. It has not quite wrinkled down the cities I've seen yet, but it will one day, that the tribes will be coming after cities saying upgrade your culvert for fish passage. They'll allow all those things. So identify projects, and the big thing is, the city's real good at looking at your capital facilities plan at a six-year horizon. I would suggest that this plan look at a 20-year horizon for project and project need. You know, establish a priority system, what projects are supposed to be done first, and also can identify potential funding sources. So it's not a project on this year's budget that I've seen, but it's a project that you should look to public works for some time in the near future to include on your work plan on an annual basis. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, and I've got one other sheet here from Tasha Edwards. Tasha, just to double check, because there's no subject on here, is this related to either a public hearing? Okay, perfect, step on up. All right, you've got three minutes.
Hi there, thank you everyone for being here tonight. I just have a couple of comments. Number one, I wanted to point out, I don't know if you guys know or not, but the Grove Church came over to Eagle Ridge and did a huge cleanup like a week or two ago. And I think our Public Works Department arranged with them to pick up all of that debris. And so I just, I wanted to thank the Public Works Department for reaching out and working with the Grove Church to make that happen, because Eagle Ridge Garden is, is a beautiful place to go. But after that big storm, all of the downed tree limbs and things like that was kind of getting in the way. The other thing is, on tonight's agenda, we're talking about the flock cameras. And so I did have a citizen have some questions about that. They weren't able to make it tonight. So I just, I wanted to just present the questions that they had and see if maybe council can follow up. Maybe we'll hear it tonight, and if not, maybe council can follow up at another time. But the citizen wanted to know, since we do have the flock cameras here in Lake Stevens, some of the cities locally have decided to turn those off. And we were wondering if Lake Stevens has considered that. And also questions about whether the federal government has accessed our flock cameras here in Lake Stevens. So those are two questions. And following up, has the council or the people in charge of those cameras considered those two things? And if so, what are the thoughts on that and where, where's the city at regarding those two questions? So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tasha. Okay, it looks like that's it for the green sheets. That moves us on to council business, which will be a little atypical tonight. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Shipman for our usual council business. And then we've got one item here that I will, I will handle. So Councilmember Shipman.
Okay, thank you. Angie, let's go ahead and start with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shipman. I have nothing this evening, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Donahue?
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Councilmember Dotteri?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. At your place, I left a couple of pages that talk about details of current transportation taxes and fees. There's a few other pages in there that show a breakdown of sales taxes, TBDs, and everything else. And this is for all the cities in the fourth county area that PSRC is in charge of. I thought it was interesting, if you look at some of what's going on and what's happening with PSRC and other cities and how they're doing their sales taxes and their TBDs and all of that kind of stuff. So it's interesting data that is just interesting reading when you, when you get a chance. And one of the reasons I bring it up is PSRC right now is struggling with coming up with a way of funding $49 billion worth of transportation projects that in the next 20 years. So that, that's where this is all kind of coming from. We're using all this data on the PSRC Transportation Policy Board to try to figure out what kinds of things we can do to increase revenues to the tune of $49 billion.
Okay.
The other thing is, I attended a skit this morning where they talked about the plan for the, the airport in Everett, the Payne Field, the 20-year plan for that. And one of the big deals we wanted to talk to them about was if Sound Transit, who is also in the room, is planning on having a, a stop near Payne Field on Sound Transit, which they are, but they're not really sure where it's going to be. They're really constrained on where they can put that based on not infringing on the airport itself. So they're trying to get it within a quarter mile and we're not sure they're going to be able to do that. Of course, it's out there around 2041, so good luck with that. And that's it, that's all I have.
I got a question for Kim. Is that route to Everett solidified?
No, it is not solidified. However, it's really close.
But is it, I mean, is it safe to say the concept of going by Payne Field and Boeing and then five?
That concept has been solidified. That part of it is. And what they're looking for right now is exactly where they're going to have the stations. And that's, that's a pretty big sticking point. The other, the other sticking point that they have in Snohomish County is where are they going to put a maintenance facility?
Yeah.
And we're not even sure that's going to happen.
Okay.
It could be this on the East Link, so that is the only facility we could have for Snohomish. So well, you know, that's one of those things they're talking about.
But we're reasonably certain it's not going to go from Ashway up by five and bypass.
Reasonably certain, yeah. I mean, it's not set in stone yet. There's no concrete, so.
Scary.
Thank you. Councilmember Petershagen?
Yeah, not to take away any of the thunder from the presentation that's going to take place here, but I just want to thank Kurt Hill. I served on the council with him a few years back. Always appreciated your perspective on everything, and I appreciate you stepping forward in the vacancy here the last couple of months. So anyway, thank you from the city. So that's all.
Councilmember Ewing?
So I do appreciate Councilmember-elect Tasha Edwards bringing up the thing about the service at Eagle Ridge Park in preparation for a conference tomorrow, the Just Serve Conference. Thirty percent of the services provided in the U.S. is through faith-based organizations. Grove Church is in Marysville. Some of their members live in Lake Stevens and their church is very active. I attended one of their services, even though I don't belong to their church, and they were very focused on Lake Stevens and serving in our community. So hopefully, those who take over, since the two liaisons of Just Server are going away, that that'll be picked up by the new council members and make that happen. And I also want to thank Councilmember Hill. So I think one of the things that I really respect and appreciate about him is him prioritizing his, his marriage and his being a husband and father and how that's a priority and how that benefits him and his service. And so I just, and conversation with him, I wasn't betraying any confidences, but I just, I really respect that and appreciate what you bring to the table in that role and how that impacts your ability to serve the community. Because I know it's a sacrifice to try and balance those important priorities with your day job and serving here in the community. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Oh, I could talk for hours, but I won't. You know, I am grateful to groups like Grove Church and I know the church over here by Connor Lake as well, many others, LDS community, just really stepping up and our parks are, we spend a lot of time, probably an inordinate amount of time, it seems, this year when I was on the council compared to some, some of our other issues, which is fine, because parks are so important, but they don't function well without citizen involvement. So recently, I have started volunteering for the city of Seattle for their conservatory. That's part of that's just my, my kink with plants and stuff. But anyway, I've noticed that Seattle has a robust Parks Department because of all the volunteers they have and the community involvement with, with that. And so it is nice to see that not only are our residents, but residents probably, Marysville also came over and helped in our parks. And I'm sure that there are residents of Lake Stevens that reciprocate on that too. Thank you to the council for giving your confidence in me in replacing Marcus. Marcus was a good friend. I learned a lot from him. We sparred quite a bit, probably more behind scenes and here at the council. But I did learn a lot about how government works, how some of our economy works here in Lake Stevens because of his long-term involvement with that. And so I've, I've kept this, you know, as a reminder, this is just a little token, a coaster from his memorial service that says M2, that's his name and his wife's name, Marcella. So in remembrance of him, I'm grateful that I had this second opportunity to serve our community.
Thank you. Okay, and I just would like to add, I just recently got to know you a little bit when you stepped up to fill Marcus's position. And I just want to thank you, your knowledge became obvious immediately. You know, your experience with our city and your knowledge, in-depth knowledge of the city. So I want to thank you for stepping up and, and serving during that time. And then also a note on the Parks Department is, we recently acquired Cavill Hill. And I know in the past, the dog park there, at that park, was all maintained by volunteers. So that's another park here in Lake Stevens that I know was, the upkeep was by volunteers. And I don't know if this, what the city's plan is at this point, taking over that park. But yeah, we have a lot of good citizens doing some good things. So thank you for bringing that to attention, Tasha. I think it's important to bring our public to our meetings and acknowledge all that they do.
For sure.
And then Ryan, did you want to?
So I was going to, but since we've already kind of hit most of the people in line, I guess we'll go back to Kim and Angie. If either of you would like to say anything directly to Councilmember Hill, then I'll, I'll go ahead and do my thing.
I would, thank you. I appreciate that. You know, Kurt and I ran together six years ago, which seems like yesterday, but we're on the campaign trail together and I started to get to know him then. And just really appreciated over the years, his, his wisdom and his wit and his willingness to sit down and have a cup of coffee and kind of talk through things. You'll be missed. And I appreciated having a chance to work with you over the last, last couple of months. And I hope that we continue to see you around in some capacity. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you for your sacrifice. Thanks for working hard for the citizens of Lake Stevens. I look forward to our next cup of coffee.
Yeah, so Kurt brought quite a few things to the city. One of them was one we're going to talk about tonight. He'll talk about that here when, when we get to it. But I appreciated Kurt also for his, for what he brought to the council both times. I appreciate everything that you've ever said. You've actually, you and I don't actually get along a lot on some of the things that we've talked about. However, you have actually changed my mind a few times due to some of the wisdom that you've brought to the council. And I always appreciate when somebody brings something new to the table that makes me think a little bit different. And, and I don't mind changing my mind when somebody comes up and makes me feel that they're right and I might be incorrect. And you've done that a couple of times in the last several years. And I really do appreciate the time and thank you for stepping up for Marcus. I know, I know, we all appreciate that. And it made it really easy to transition past Marcus's death.
Thank you.
Okay, so a little out of order. For those that don't know, the reason we are saying thank you and goodbye to Councilmember Hill tonight is he's in the unique position of filling a vacancy that was on our council. And I, I learned this recently. So unlike many of the positions, because of the way it was filled, as soon as the results from this last election are certified, Councilmember-elect Packard will be joining us next week in Councilmember Hill's place. So we look forward to that. We want to say goodbye and thank you to Councilmember Hill. And goodbye in the sense that you will no longer be joining us here, but I'm sure we'll see you around. As others have said, you know, you stepped in at a very difficult time for the council when we were dealing, you know, with a, not just a work loss, but a personal loss too. So we really appreciate that. And I have to say, I believe during the selection process, when we were looking at everybody and they wanted you, I think I was the only no vote because I said, I, I don't know him. And after the fact, I talked to my colleagues and they were like, no, you'll love him. Kurt's great. You can, you know. And they were right. You have been fantastic to work with and it makes me sad that we don't get to work together longer, but I really appreciate it. And so Kelly, okay, if you would please join me up here, we've got a little something for you.
Certificate of appreciation here for Councilmember Hill, and we just want to say thank you very much.
I don't like it.
Here we go.
We'll try to get you up on the screen.
Yeah.
Okay, so one, two, three. More, I'm gonna try to get Angie in there. One, two, three. And Council President, there'll be no mayor business. He's...
No mayor. Well, I always like to throw to Gene just to make sure he's on his toes. Anything from the executive side, Gene?
Really fun working with you twice now and don't surrender.
Yeah, I believe there's two openings on the Planning Commission now, just throwing that out there.
Well, not to speak out of turn, but I have been contacted by the Parks and Arts Foundation to come alongside and work with them. So I think you'll see me on that next year.
Wonderful. Okay, that moves us to item number nine on the agenda, City Department Reports. Nine A is the flock camera update with, so what, what is it? Is it assistant? I lose track. Assistant Deputy Commander General, Deputy Chief, okay. Deputy Chief Thomas, please.
Well, we were asked to come and give a little update on flock from all the recent kind of headlines it's been getting in the press. So I hope to answer a few of your questions. I'm guessing I won't answer all or can't answer all. But we're, we're going to do it a little bit unique today. We're gonna, the chief is back there sharing, sharing his screen. I just want to let kind of everybody, you all in the public, to know what we see when we do a vehicle search on flock. This one is, the chief just hit alerts. We did not put in a license plate for this. This vehicle was entered as a hot list vehicle, which means another agency had to enter this vehicle. Either agency or a, like a dispatch record center would have to enter this vehicle into flock. What you see here is the license plate, obviously, and the vehicle. The reason why this was in a hot list, because this was a missing person. I don't know the details behind this because our next step, that gives me the license plate and the location. It, it verifies the license plate and, and the, and the vehicle, obviously. For me to dig deeper in that, I have to go on my computer system that is governed by access, that is governed by CGIS, Criminal Justice Information System, that we're all governed by. If they take that away from me, take it away from the chief, we don't have jobs. We can't do our jobs. So we take that very serious. If you see on the map right there, that's where the car went. It went southbound. That's all I have. That's the information I have. Without looking at that car view further, that's it. That's all I got. Do you want to just scroll down for just, I don't know what's on here, so. That, so this is another one. This was coming off the trestle. We have one there. We have six cameras here in Lake Stevens. They're all on major thoroughways for ingress and regress. This particular hit was entered also on a hot list. This was not one of our searches. This was on the hot list that somebody else put in there. It is, came back as a stolen vehicle. Again, I can't really tell what, what state that's from, from that. So I would have to go in, I'm not going, if I would see this car, I would not stop it just based on this flock hit. I would have to look at it, verify on my onboard, onboard computer or via radio if this is truly the stolen vehicle. So again, what we see is license plate and, and car. Before we get into too much more, Chief, do you want to show our transparency page?
Yeah, let me, I gotta reshare. Hold on just a second.
Before we get too far, and so I'm going to answer Tasha's question real quick. Yes, government agencies have accessed our system, unknown to us. Back in July, when we were doing our system audit, we, we do a network audit and a agency audit for how it's being used. So they have to put a reason, they have to put a case number if they search for a car, right? We have to put it in there. So I go in there just to verify, okay, are we doing it right? And the people that we share with, are they doing it right? Because if they're not, they're, they'll get booted off. They're governed by the same contract and policies that flock has, that, you know, you could only use it for law enforcement investigative purposes only. In July, we started to see east side, east side of the state agencies. Well, the chief and I came to the decision when we first got flock, it's like, nah, let's keep this a little smaller, right? So we just did west side of the state agencies. So my network audit wasn't massive. It's, it's already big enough, but I just wanted to keep on the west side. We started seeing east side of the state agencies, like Zilla and just, I mean, obvious not west side stuff, right? So we asked flock to come in, said, what the heck, every time we delete these, they're popping back up. What's going on here? Well, they, they went to kind of back office of flock. It's very, it's different now. It's more transparent. But there was a statewide and a nationwide toggle switch where ours was on. We had no idea. We still have to accept invitations and people send it to us, you know, to, to access our, our cameras. And we have the ability to say yes or no, accept, deny. So we were wondering, okay, what's going on here, you know, where I, I know I didn't accept Zilla, right? So they showed us, we turned them off, and since then, there has been no access since, since July. We didn't know there was, but since then, there has, there has been.
And I'll add one thing with Dean is saying, why we leave it to Western Washington is because some of the crimes that we've been having here in North Cove and other areas of our city are not local people. They're people coming out of Tuckwell, a federal way down in the south, into South King County. So we want to make sure that we're having our ties because we, Dean will tell you some success stories where they were found outside of our, our local area down in the South King County.
Right. If you just bear with me for a second, and I'll take as many questions as, as you can handle here in a second. I'm just going to go through just a few on Saturday.
Dean, do you want to go through this real quick?
Okay, yeah, this is, so this is found on our website. Chief, want to scroll down. We have flock, flock transparency portal right there. Anybody can go look at this. It shows how many cameras, how many hits that a camera has had, how many... how many hot list vehicles has gone through our six cameras and how many searches that we have done in the last 30 days. That's us putting in a license plate, a case number and a reason.
And all of our policies.
Yep. And then our policies, our department policy for Flock is there. And same with Flock's Privacy and Ethics page. So anybody could read that. That's what we look at. And it does include immigration and reproductive investigations, right? That's against our policy. So. Anybody have questions about our transparency page?
So that's available to the public.
Yeah, it's on our website.
For those that claim there's no transparency and that we're hiding things, that's not accurate.
That's, it's on.
So if I look on the community page and they say we're hiding things and we're not doing that's incorrect.
Right.
Okay.
So a couple, so on Saturday, I popped in the police department, just to talk to the guys, bring us some snacks. We just had an off kind of conversation and Flock was brought up. And I was like, hey, if you guys just have a minute, can you just shoot me a couple bullet points? I'm not on a computer anymore. The chief has me at the desk, right? So I don't use Flock. I, I don't. I miss it, that, that part of the job, but he has me doing this fun stuff instead. So I had asked them, my guys, my patrol guys that are out there that use this stuff. Hey, could you just give me a couple bullet points? I was just looking for a couple. Since Saturday night, they had with case numbers, and I'm not going to read every single case number, but I'm just going to read a few. Prolific vehicle theft, burglary, looter arrests arrested after we put out a flock notice and SESO located suspect arrested for numerous, numerous felony warrants, eluding and possession of a stolen firearm. Robbed weapon at North Cove Park. The suspect vehicle was hitting on Flock and stopped in Marysville, leading to the arrest of a suspect. The, the license plate was in the call. So the reporting party had the license plate. We immediately put in the flock and Marysville soon after said, we're out with the vehicle. So they caught it on one of their flock cameras in the area and they, and they tracked it down. Recently occupied Lake Stevens School District bus was struck at 99 and 20th. Driver fled. All we had was the type of vehicle, vehicle was located via flock and suspect charged with hit and run. Marysville PD established PC for felony DV assault that occurred involving a firearm. Suspect vehicle located via flock and stopped by LSPD suspect arrested and turned over to Marysville Police Department and was booked for assault to DV with a firearm recovered. Hit and run reported vehicle identified by Flock stolen plate vehicle identified Everett PD posted PC assault to on RO a vehicle, vehicle located, RO arrested and transferred into EPD's custody. LSPD observed a possible gun involved with the incident inside the vehicle and a search warrant was taken place by EPD. First degree assault with a firearm. This is the one on 103rd where the guy's truck was getting broken into and he went to confront him and wound up getting shot in the leg. Our, our nexus was our first degree assault suspect was taken into custody by VOTF in relation to another Marysville DV assault with a firearm with subsequent flock ID and follow up. And we were able to seize the suspect's phone in relation to our case. And Homer was shot after confronting the males. So that was a nexus with Flock. We have, again, several weapon charges. Marysville again, PD regarding PC via Resburg theft of motor vehicles, stolen plates. And we just put it in Flock and found the car. Those are just a few. Like I said, that was Saturday with a conversation with just some of my guy, my, my guys working that night. They, you know, I, we, we do track on, and I didn't even go in. I didn't look. I didn't dig. And that was on purpose. I just said, you know what? Top of your mind, give me some case numbers and they're all case numbers here. Give me some case numbers, examples of, of successes. To your point, yes, we could turn it off, right? It's a tool. It's a valuable tool. We don't have all the, all the guys we want, you know, it's, I've spoken many times about how many officers per thousand people we should have ideally in, you know, regards to what we do have. This is a force multiplier. It's what we use it for. It's a tool. We use it for the citizens. We don't use it for us. We want to catch these guys that are creating these crimes. There's a lot of victims out there that, you know, their case just disappears because of not able to track down leads. So.
And I'll add on to this, what Dean is saying is, you know, with the immigration status searches and the reproductive care searches. Now with the state of Washington, Flock went in and added this. So now we have it turned off where these searches won't even be able to show up or be able to be done on our system. Illinois has already had that kind of in place where we signed it off when we got the system back in September of 2024. We made knowledge of that. We would not use it for those purposes and that was already affirmed. What else I want to show you is what the Flock has done is come up with some settings in the backend where we can require case numbers, which we do. When an officer goes into search, they have to put a case number in and what it's related to and the notes what it's for. So that helps us with our audit. Also on the backend, if we do the audit on for the overview, you'll come down here like Dean said, what we found out in the back office, which was not displayed at the time we obtained this was the search features. Enabled statewide lookup, enable national lookup. We don't allow those. We never turned them on, but it was on the Flock system when it originally got deployed and now we've turned them off so they don't have it. Everybody that asks for sharing in this device, which I'll take you over to our sharing page is all these requests that come, come in. We look at these on a basis that they come in. These are all the ones that are pending, which are all Eastern Washington. There is no out of states because we don't allow out of state people, but all these from Washington ones we have not connected to yet until we get a better hold on what's going on. All these approved ones are, you will see in our page is all on the west side of Washington. These are all the agencies that we connect with where we've had some crimes in their area that have come up in here and vice versa. So these are all the Western Washington. People can always ask for copy of this where who we give it to and who we don't give it to. So it's all in there. And you can see on the map, there are several flock cameras that cover the Western Washington area. There are some that are shared and some are not because of security issues. Here's what we do. This is what we give. We have access to all this, but all we have is this search and hot list. We don't have the VMS system. We don't pay for that. And the analyticals we can do for road tracking and stuff like that. This is the new button that they put in here to revoke out of state sharing, which Dean does. He goes in here and he hits it and they revoked anybody that was on out of state. So we got that updated. And now we have just 55 agencies that we share with now. So they have a lot of stuff in here to show and keep this under control. And then also our organizational audits, this shows you when Dean goes in, like he was checking his vehicle today just as a test. He put it in there that is testing his patrol car and that's what shows you, this is what they put in. This is what they're doing. This shows you investigation, violation protection order, investigation, all these different things that we're dealing with. And then it has the network, which shows you all the agencies that are hitting our system. And now we know that they're on the west side of the state and all those people are. So we get, and we do these audits twice a year. Now we're doing them on a monthly basis until we feel more comfortable.
Are we ready for questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, Angie, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I have several questions. We know that the Immigration Customs Enforcement had access to Lake Stevens data prior to us finding that there was a toggle switch to be able to turn that off. Do we know for certain that they didn't have any assistance getting that information from anyone on our staff?
Nobody on our staff.
Yes, that is confirmed Angie. We did not give them that information. Nobody on our staff gave them that information. They looked into the database on their own and got access to it.
Okay, thank you. And then I'd also seen that Border Patrol also accessed Flock data from several cities throughout the state of Washington. Do we know if Border Patrol was able to access data from Lake Stevens?
It's the same, it's the same thing. It was pre-July.
Okay, so since July, since we found that there was a toggle switch and changed it, as far as we know, there haven't been any additional federal lookups of data that would be seen by the Lake Stevens flock cameras?
Correct.
Yes, Angie, we did that last week. We did an audit of it all and it's showing zero all the way from July till now.
Thank you. When council voted to move forward with the flock cameras, there were, there were concerns by myself and also public members about the, this not being a matter of public record. There's some real privacy concerns around being able to file public records requests for the data kept. I'm wondering if the recent court decision stating that this is indeed public record and subject to the Public Records Act, if that's impacted or changed any internal policies or internally the way that we will use and handle the data moving forward.
That, that will not change for us. We treat everything as, as the same. That's, we work in that world. We work in the PDR world. We know what involved in it. The question that they came out of that court case was who owned the data, Flock or, or the individual agencies? The, of North said that individual agencies. So with that, if somebody did a public record request, which somebody did, and we, we, this was prior to the court case, we said, sure, we'll, we'll give you our data. So we did, we did the data dump for, was it 30 day or it was a day?
Yes.
Somebody asked for a day, certain amount of hours of all the vehicles that went through, right? So obviously it was hundreds of vehicles. So what they would get is a license plate and a date and time and location stamp in this spreadsheet. And that's what they got. If they want to, along, he wanted the picture as well, right? So there's a lot of data there. Took a lot of time, took a lot of effort. And while this person, I misspoke earlier when I said we released it. Well, we didn't because he never came back. He said like, oh, you're actually going to do this? Oh, nevermind. So he hasn't come and, and paid for what he was asking for, for his, for his request. So as of right now, we have it.
Also Angie, and 2026 Flocks is updating it because right now we can only get 100 images at a time. And if you do 16,000, you know, where it goes like the number, right? 16,000 vehicles in the day in that time period, we'd have to end up get 100 each of those so that you can tell how long that takes. What they're going to do is bulk so we can do it all at one time, which saves our PDR people time to download that information. But we were the only city because of our legal advice that we got from our city legal, we have to release the data. We did that, but he never came back and paid for it, as Dean said. And it never got released. But there is a PDR request. They can process it just like any other request.
So, so what's to stop someone requesting data for nefarious purposes? If there's, let's say there's a, a person who's engaging in stalking behavior and they file a data request to, to get the information about their victim and their whereabouts for the last 30 days. Like what, what is, what safeguards do we have to protect people from nefarious reasons for people wanting that data?
Unfortunately, that's more your world than our world. That's a legislative issue with, with public requests rules. We wish that if we had a say in stuff that it is, you know, somebody brought up about, well, can I just do a data request on, you know, a spouse, right? We don't have any say of yes or no. So it's anything, you know, you could do a request, any public entity you could do a request on. You could do a WASD, well, how many times is he going over 520 or she's going over 520, right? For, for tolls. It's, you know, I, I wish we could change it, but I know Julie Uber wishes she could change it.
Yeah, Angie, we wish you could change it with WASPIC. Yeah, we, we've done this with WASPIC so many times of trying to change the PDR request. And that legislative change is huge because it takes legislation between the Senate and the House to make those changes. And that's what's hard. You can go in and ask for somebody's, how many times we've contacted somebody and we have to release that information. You can ask for case reports. Yes, there's some of the stuff we have to redact based on if it's a juvenile and some other things. But we would redact what we had and had to release what we have to. And that's the hard part of it. That's why we have so many public disclosure requests. We have people asking for every accident report. There are just people that want the information to call the people that were in accidents to offer services from insurance services to chiropractors to tow services, all these kinds of things. So it all has to be changed by legislation.
Right. But before flock cameras, we didn't have data about people's whereabouts and their, and their movement patterns and where they may have, may have been traveling. And now we have that data. And so my, my, my worry is when we voted on this, it was with the assurance that these weren't subject to public record. And that paints a different picture to me than, you know, now that it's subject to public record, it, it just, it, it, it really, to me, opens up just concerns around safety, around public safety and public privacy. That is all the questions I have for right now. Thank you.
I have a quick follow up on that and forgive me because I'm trying to dredge this up the depths of my memory. Was there not something about, it only became a record that had, our initial assumption, it only became a record that was subject to PRR once the flock data was somehow like pulled down and integrated into a case file? I thought I remembered a discussion along those lines. Now it sounds like someone can come and say, give me all your flock data for the last 30 days, regardless of whether it's associated with a case.
Real quick, the city legal wants to talk.
Sorry, who does?
Greg.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, Greg, please. Oh, glad you're here. Okay.
Okay, let's see. I think I'm here. All right. Yeah, Angie was referring, there was a recent case involving the city of Stanwood, I believe, and who else? Sebra Woolley. Yeah. And that's really going to be, I think the first case, we're going, there are several other pending cases with regarding the issue of, of what is this cause of, when does a flock camera picture become a public record? So I'm sure the issue is going to go up. The, the other cases, there are several other cases that are still pending and they're probably at some point get consolidated, go up to the, to the court of appeals. Basically what has been happening currently, the, the records request that was made here as well as requests that have been made in other jurisdictions have been made through a law firm in Yakima that has someone making these records requests. And they were timing these records requests to try to make it very difficult for the agencies to comply. If they didn't comply, they were then seeking damages under the Public Records Act. And that's why we recommended that we go ahead, we comply with the request. Yeah, tell them that these pictures can be available, but here's what's going to cost. And here's what the time is. As soon as I knew that we were going to provide them and what the cost was, they withdrew their request. And so that, at least that part of our strategy worked. This is a very hot topic now in law enforcement. I see that it is on the agenda for a Friday discussion with city and county attorneys throughout the state of Washington. So I'm going to keep abreast on that discussion. And I think over the next few months or however long it might take, this issue is going to get resolved. And I think probably now that we get, we're getting all the law enforcement agencies in Washington interested and involved in this discussion, hopefully we're going to be able to put enough pressure on the flock camera system operators to change their contract. Because the issue is, and remember this issue came up when we were looking at their contract. It, it states that the data belongs to the agency. And they refused at that time, we requested that they change that provision of the, of the, of the contract, but that they were unwilling to do that at that time. So I think we're looking at an environment now where this, this issue is, is, is very ripe. We haven't seen yet that during this time, that the ability of the public to make public disclosure requests is being abused with respect to flock cameras, but that could happen. It's just like, as the chief and assistant chief were just saying, people can request through public records, all sorts of. all sorts of documents from the city if they want to try to harass or make life difficult for their neighbor or somebody else in the city. But we're going to keep abreast of this issue as it's floating through the courts. There should be more court decisions coming up in, in the near future. And we'll probably have a, more of a discussion with you on this issue when we get some more information on that. But that's the current state of affairs with respect to flock cameras. The arguments that, 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 that I had hoped might prevail if a request came in. I don't believe they were all made in the, this first particular case, but I have confidence having learned a little more about some of the other litigation and some of the other cities, that this issue is going to get a better hearing on some of the additional cases. So that's where we're at.
Can I ask a quick question of Greg while you're here? Can you, can you just quickly talk about the, the other cities that have turned their cameras off? In the kind of, I think, waiting to see how some of this legislation or some of these, these cases turn out? What are the pros and cons of turning, turning the cameras off while we, while things become clear?
Well, I haven't had that discussion with any of the attorneys at cities that have done that. Obviously you have a contract, you know, and it, it has termination provisions. Turning our cameras off is, you're going to go back to the pre flock period where law enforcement, it's really a, it's, it's an information issue that the city will not get the alerts from the other participating jurisdictions. We won't be able to send out the alert to other neighboring jurisdictions to look for, you know, that vehicle that was in our, our, our park that turned out to be, or, or the vehicle that was a stolen vehicle. We won't have that information and the police will not be able to have the enforcement tool that it has now. That's really the major issue if we turn it off. I, anything else to add on that, chief?
No, you're right. That is an investigation tool that we would lose. And we would, like you said, we had a hit and run vehicle that we solved out of this. We would have never been able to find him. And that is the hard part of it. It's another tool, technology tool that allows us to do our investigations.
But others, other cities are, are, are turning them off for a reason. It would be helpful to know what is their, what is their reasoning or why, why are they being directed or, or, why is it being suggested that they turn their cameras off? Like what is the risk?
I'll tell you Angie, when we, I mean, I have this discussion on, on Friday. I'll try, I'll put, pose that question out and ask for those jurisdictions if they could give me some information about that. Now, what I get, I'll get back to you.
That'd be great.
And to the, and to the rest of the council.
And I just have a couple of comments. Councilmember Donahue and George Stad. I also remember specifically asking when these were approved, who had access to this information? And we were told at the time, your memory is correct, Ryan, that they would be associated with a criminal case number. I remember specifically asking at the time, say you've hired a divorce attorney, you expect that, or you suspect you're maybe some infidelity or something from your spouse, will they be able to track vehicles, you know, in certain areas and be able to pull those up to be used against citizens that way? And at the, at that time we were told no. So I am, I guess a little surprised that that's flip flopped. I understand that it's legislative and it's certainly not our police department's decision that we have to follow the law that's being passed down, all the codes that are being passed down. But you were both correct. I remember the, the exact same thing. Having said that, when I hear of all of the good these cameras have done, one thing I didn't see mentioned or didn't hear mentioned that I know they've always also been used for is amber alerts and silver alerts, right? And when I was looking at some of those things, I mean, there were possible abductions that were being tracked through these vehicles. And I personally have a history of being stalked five years of my life, two separate times, 20 years apart. I can tell you why. It's not fun. The second time it happened, I had an officer assigned to my case as he put it to keep me in a body bag or out of a body bag because they had enough information on this person that they knew he would eventually try to kill me. So I know what that feels like and I know how frightening that is. And I know how important it is to protect our public from people who have nefarious intent. However, I, I, we need to give our, I personally feel we need to give our officers the help they need to keep us safe. And if it turns out that these cameras are being used for nefarious intent, which in some ways, I mean, it's, it's, you know, they're being used, it sounds like by attorneys to, and insurance companies to get revenue. I mean, that shouldn't be a reason that they're used either, I wouldn't think. But at this point, the amount of crime that's being solved, stolen vehicles being recovered. I remember also hearing the stats on that, how immediately stolen vehicles are being recovered. We have violent criminals that are being apprehended. We have lost and kidnapped people that are being found. These are all very positive things. I would like to see our legislature move forward and do something about the public records disclosures that are being made just because. It would be nice to see them attached to a case as we were told originally. But it just seems to me there's so much positive and a lot of possibility of abuse. No doubt possibility of the abuse of abuse. But at this point, not enough evidence of that happening for me to feel that they aren't a valuable tool to our police department.
So councilman, if I could say two things on your comments. Number one, as you said, is to protect those people that are being stalked and stuff. There is violation protection orders that are put into the NCIC that we get alerts on. So we know where those people that are not supposed to be in the areas of certain cameras, we can track them through that way. So we are protecting those people that have violation or protection orders, harassment orders and those things too. It gives us the location of the, the person that's not supposed to be in that area. So that helps with that. Regarding the amber alert, the amber, we had an 88 or 84 year old gentleman that left our city and we were able to find him within four hours up in Arlington because it hit our flock system, went up to their flock system and they found him up on the Jordan Road. So we have found a lot of missing people because of this. And statewide, they found a lot of people. Today's amber alert just went out and that information was put into the system to be able to track the vehicle. That also tracks it on the DOT cameras and those other things too. So that, that's what the tool is used for is to, to stop crime from happening. And people have seen a reduction in crime because of tools like flock. So I see Greg had his hand up again. Sorry, Greg.
Oh, that's okay. I would, I was just going to comment, you know, the, the ability to make a public records request doesn't, you know, allow for a real time docking by a member of the public against somebody, right? You, you make a public records request, you're making requests for rec, something that occurred in the past and a picture in the past. So it's, whereas for law enforcement, flock is a re, can be essentially a real time tool to track somebody while they're still in the area, still able to get found and, and arrested. And for that reason, I think that's one of the reasons that we really don't, we really haven't seen public records requests coming from the public to, 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 to see flock camera data. They, what we've been getting, as I, as I mentioned before, were people that were trying to use the public record system to get money. Right? Or, or to make a point. But, but it's not a real time tool and that does discourage public records requests. Cause, cause it's really not going to give the public the kind of information or something that, that, that they're really going to need to see, except in maybe an exceptional case.
Yeah. And one of the cities, Angie, you were talking about that turned it off with Stanwood. They turned it off because they didn't have the staff to do the PDR work when the PDR request started coming in. Lynwood and Redmond have turned it off for different reasons, and I don't know the exact reasons from them. I know that Chief Redmond's, our chief from Redmond, Earl Lowe, spoke to us at Waspik, a couple of reasons why. And it had more to do with immigration being involved with it, which they did not have access to it. So.
Hey Greg.
Yes.
I'm going to change it up a little bit. I have a separation of powers question for you. So we approved the contract, we authorized the mayor to sign the flock contract. Earlier you mentioned termination provisions. Just so I can kind of level set here what the council's role in this discussion is going forward. If we wanted to, could we even vote to terminate that? Or is it that now an executive decision?
Well, I'll have to look at the, the camera, but I believe it's an executive decision. I mean, you certainly, council could, if the council felt strongly that they didn't want to terminate the contract, it could certainly make that recommendation to the, to the mayor. But since he, he, he has signed it, he's in charge of the contract.
Okay. And you know, I, this, I'm asking this in a vacuum, you know,
Sure.
with the mayor has been great and he's been highly collaborative, but I just want to make sure we're clear on our role in asking these questions that, you know, we, we are the voice of the people. We can ask these questions, but ultimately we can't, we cannot decide to turn it off barring you coming back and saying, actually I read the contract and there's something that would allow for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But we could block the funding for it.
Yeah, I guess we do have a budget coming up here.
We do have a budget.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure if the council gave a recommend, would it desire the mayor to do with respect to the camera that, that he would probably work with you.
Okay.
I'll let him answer that question, but I, that's probably the case.
Thank you. Having that in mind, and again, keeping in mind that, you know, this is all on the executive side now. Hearing some of the concerns, you know, being brought up, it sounds like it's about targeting particular individuals, trying to track them. Even if, you know, Greg said it's not a great real time tracking tool, have we thought about any way? So I'm imagining this, if somebody wants to try and stalk a particular person, I can't imagine them being like, give me all your license plates in the last 30 days. I'll dig through it. Maybe they're great with Excel or, you know, Photoshop, whatever, and they will. But I would imagine that being more particular vehicles, particular license plates. If we get PRRs of that nature, do we have any policy about notifying the person? Could we do that? You know, we're not allowed to let someone know that their plate or car has specifically been requested in a PRR? I'm seeing heads, but.
Well, we certainly could if, 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 if.
Wait, I'm getting your answer.
Yeah, Greg.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we certainly could if we wanted. I mean, there are other cases where records have been requested that we think of various number of reasons, a, a, a citizen might be concerned and we'll let them know that a request has been made and they have so many days to challenge the request if they so desire before we release it. That's, that's a very common, common thing that happens with public records requests.
All right. Thank you. Cause I mean, as I sit here and think about it, it seems to me that would, if, you know, we're, we're not seeing a lot of that. We're not seeing a lot of PRRs for this stuff in general anyway. So if we do have that scenario, it seems like it might be a pretty easy way to at least mitigate that. So I don't know. I, again, I leave that to the executive branch to figure out, but I think some.
Yeah. I was, I was going to say, I'm sure if a, if a public records request came in for law enforcement records, say that related to a domestic dispute. I mean, it's, that's something that's going to go on our alert. And if we, if we thought that there was somebody who's, might be endangered by, by that, I'm sure that there would be some action taken by the police department with that. But all, chief, you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I do. Because like right now, we have 1,000 or 102,000, sorry, wait a minute. Nope. 22,615. If we had to disclose all that information, we would have to call all those license plates?
No, sorry. I'm, I'm saying if somebody makes a request saying, hey, I want to see all the pictures related to this license plate on this making.
They can make a PDR request and get that information. Yes.
But I'm saying.
They have 30 days to do.
Right. But if we receive a quest that tailored, could we reach out to the owner of that plate and say, hey, they looked, they requested your car? I'm, I'm operating on the assumption here that if someone's trying to stalk someone, they're not going to say, give me a million pictures. I'll go through all of them. They're going to ask for a specific plate, a specific car, that, that type of search. Can we flag that and be proactive at all?
I'd have to think.
Yeah, I would say you don't have to answer tonight. Sorry, councilmember.
Delving into so many hypotheticals, there's a new council coming in. It's very clear that they have, they'll have a different agenda and mindset. And so really us talking about it now really is, is not productive. So we have, we're into one item. We've got till eight o'clock. We have one hour. So I'm proposing that we move along. I'm channeling my inner Marcus.
Quick question though, as to Greg's comment about alerting a potential person, I guess, for an incident that somebody is looking at, who is the person that arbitrates that as to whether it's justified or not? Notifying that person that may be a target?
Doesn't have to be justified. That's the, kind of the issue.
Yeah, exactly.
You don't have to stand in front of a judge to, to make a request.
So depending on who is making that decision, you could have some real problems.
Again, that unfortunately, that's a legislative thing that, you know, it's our world. So we're kind of used to it, right? So it, it's something that we, we have to do, but there is, you're right. We can go down rabbit holes all day long, especially with stalking people nowadays is, you know, $20 air tag, right? And it's real time. So it's, you know, for us, we have six cameras. I was hoping to have mine when I drove my patrol car, just to, just to give you example. Yep, there goes Dean southbound on 4200 block of highway nine. Then where? How did I get to work? Right? Did I go all the way down nine and go left on 20th? Did I go on 91st and grab a coffee somewhere? It's, that's all you're going to see is my car that one time because I didn't pass any other flock cameras, right? Because we have them at the edges of our cities just to ingress, regress. That's all we could afford. You know, we weren't asking for, for the, for the bulk of 20 cameras like Arlington has, right? We have them by the trestle, entering our city on nine, on Machias, by the Boys and Girls Club, right? It's for us, it's the person that just did that assault for DB. If we could say, hey, at least he went eastbound out of this city, off of East Lake Shore, right? At least give us something. Maybe we can notify, hey, Snohomish, just a heads up, we got it eastbound. It could be going on my chest. It didn't hit off our camera. So it's got to be going southbound. That's what we have. It's an investigative tool. So, and unfortunately what people ask for, for public pressure requests, it's out of our hands. We can't, we can't do anything. So.
Point taken. I, I do think if for no other reason than as a matter of public trust, this might warrant further discussion. But you're right, we do have a lot of items to move through tonight. So just one quick pass, anyone that hasn't spoken on this yet, would they like to? Or we good? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. That moves us on to nine B, Planning Community Development Q3 Report. I see Christie is Russ back there hiding with you? Okay, Russ.
Okay, I'm looking at the agenda and the time tonight. I'll just make a couple of brief comments. So the, the staff is well on their way to complete their 2025 work program. We still have a lot of elements that'll get moved over into next year's work program. We've had, as you all know, a lot of new state mandates that came up. So we've been working diligently on getting those completed first. And the development activity is staying strong and there's lots of other accomplishments. So with that, the report is in your packet. You can read it at your leisure. If you have any questions, you know, feel free to reach out to me.
All right. Anyone have any questions, having possibly read that on their own time? Okay. I think that might've been the most efficient planning community development report I've ever had. Thank you, Russ. Okay. All right. That moves us on to IM10, the consent agenda.
Move to proof consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Consent agenda approved. That moves us on to 11A, the first public hearing of the night. So the first one will be on the 2026 Annual Budget Public Hearing on Property Tax Ordinance 1206. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and I will turn it over to Barb.
Thank you, council. Let me get my screen shared here. Yeah, I'll bring it over. Too many screens. Yeah, give me a second. Everything's in my web. Everything's in my web. Thank you, he knows it. Let's just put this over here. Okay, let's get started. So the first public hearing of the night is the property tax public hearing. Do we need to open the public hearing before we start?
I said it was open.
Oh, thanks. He's a little busy.
I can open it again if you want.
No, no, I think once is good. Okay, so this is a look at our 2026 budget, so this is the first public hearing we have on revenues, which is our property tax hearing. So looking here, we're going to go over property tax limitations. I know a number of you have seen these before, but there we have a lot of newer incoming council members, maybe they don't know as much about property taxes. So we'll look at some assessed values, limit factors, property tax levy for 2026, property tax levy breakdown by taxing district, and then look at some comparisons by between 2025 and 2026. So here's a lot of things going on here. Some of the property tax limitations, we have statutory dollar rate. Because the city is annexed into the fire district and a library district, our total maximum levy rate is $1.60. That only happens when the assessed values drop really low, so you will see that our levy rate this year is actually much lower than that. So the levy limit, there's 101% of implicit price deflator is the maximum that we can increase property tax year over year. And then we have a highest lawful levy, this is the maximum levy allowed based on that statutory dollar rate. And then there's statutory amount, which is based on the assessed value multiplied by the statutory dollar rate divided by 1,000, a lot of things. The Snohomish County assessors has a PowerPoint on property tax, that's, I believe, it's 71 slides long. So if anybody wants to delve into how property taxes are created and calculated, it's it's an interesting presentation for sure. So the assessed values in Lake Stevens overall on average increased 5.5% over the prior year. And then the implicit price deflator is 2.44% for 2026. So this just means that there's no ordinance needed to declare a substantial need because it's more than 101%. So so the price limit factor for 2026 is the 101%, so that's the base amount that can be increased. So looking here, we have the 2026 property tax levy amount is $6.7 million approximately. The levy rate, as I mentioned, is much lower than the $1.60. We're looking at about 69 cents per 1,000. The allocation, we do allocation allocate a portion of the property tax to the street fund. It is being reduced to 14% in 2026, which is approximately $944,000. And then we have the approximate overall increase, which includes the 1% levy increase, new construction, which doesn't go in that 1%, that's in addition to it, and then refunds. So overall, we're increasing property taxes approximately 2.1% overall. The tables I have on the bottom, you'll notice that the 1% regular levy increase highlighted in green is different than the column B revenue increase over 2026. So I did add a small, this isn't in the packet, but I did add a small table showing what that actually means. So we take the highest lawful levy of the $6,569,000 in column A. You increase it by the 101%, that gets you that extra 65,000, that brings you to the 6.66,634,000. And then it's actually the change between our actual levy, which was 6,602,000, so the actual regular increase is only 32,933. So that's what you will actually see in the ordinance, even though 1% is $65,000, the increase is only 32,000 for the base amount. A little confusing, I have to reach out to the assessor every year when I'm creating the ordinance because it's not logical to me. So these are some examples of the total 2025. Get this out of my way. Levy rate and the amount calculated on the second graph is the calculated levy by the district. And this is for a home with a $500,000 value, the approximate levy was $4,348 for 2025. So you can see on the table in blue, the city of Lake Stevens is in the middle. Last year, our levy rate was 71 cents per 1,000, and this year we're actually decreasing to 0.69. So that blue table is one of our taxing districts in the city of Lake Stevens. We actually have 10 tax code areas. And the levies range anywhere from $7.25 per 1,000 to $9.85, and that really depends on which districts are included in each area. For example, there are four that are in Lake Stevens School District, six in the Snohomish School District, two include Hospital District. And then the regional fire levy has three variations among the 10 TCA's, the tax district. So that's why I kind of say this is one of them. So as I mentioned, our assessed value increase 5.5% in Lake Stevens on average overall, and this drives down the levy rate. So the levy rate in 2026 will be approximately that 69 cents, and we'll look at this a little bit closer on the next slide. So this is a easier way to look at the the change between the 2025 and 2026 levy. Based on the increased assessed value and the decreased levy rate of a home with a value of a half million dollars, so I have $100,000, $500,000, and $1 million, just so people can kind of gauge where they would land. The value would be approximately $527,500 multiplied by the new rate, and the increase of the city portion of property tax would increase about $7.60. So that's about 2.1% overall. So the 2025 less 2026, that's the change divided by the 2025, that gives you about a 2.1% increase. So again, citywide average increased 5.5%, but each parcel varies. So if the assessed value increased less than 5.5%, then the amount of property tax owed by that property owner would be slightly less. And those with the increase that did increase more than the five and a half percent, they'll pay the increased portion of that difference.
So Barb, really quick, what you just said was actually going to be a question of mine, and I want to make sure I heard it right from you too. Because when people hear increase, they automatically think, oh, my taxes are going up. But essentially, if I understand it and I heard you right, if you are below the average rate of property value increase, your taxes could actually go down, and then that would be offset by anyone whose increase was above the average?
So the, if your property value actually decreased, it would decrease.
Even if it went up less than the average in the city, wouldn't it potentially go down, and then that would be offset by someone whose value went up by more than the average?
It could.
Okay, so it's not, increase in this does not mean a guarantee that every person's property taxes in the city will go up. Some of them will, but others.
Will more than others.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, mine's going down.
And this is a smaller increase than it has been in the past years. I believe last year was about 8% increase of assessed value. So this year it's 5.5%. And that really is the end of the property tax overall presentation. So any questions? I know you had one, please feel free to ask questions. Property tax isn't an easy subject. Understand.
Any questions for Barb?
Just a comment. So the overwhelming majority of the citizens believe that their property tax goes to the city. And so when you hear negative feedback, it's the city's doing this, the city's doing that. For example, Snohomish County just doubled our property tax increase on a three to two vote earlier this month. The city will get blamed for that. And so if there's a way, and I know with with the change in the council dynamic, there'll probably be less misinformation out on community pages. But I think that if we can get out in front of the curve on that and just share that information, because a lot of people think it's the city, when, I mean, you show up there, the school district is like two and a half times or three times the amount, as far as the amount that goes in there. Most people don't take the time to look at the assessed value and what percentage goes to each part. But I will just tell you, the overall majority, the negative information I heard about property tax blame the city and saying that we're not being good stewards of whatever, when we're really taking a very small portion of that amount. I mean, if you just look at that percentage, I mean, we're very low.
Once I get the 20.
So I don't know what we can do to combat that narrative, but that's that's a prevailing thought in the community.
Once I get the 2026 auditors report, once they create that, I can put, I can update the 2026 and put that on our website, too. I have our sales tax breakdown to show that we only get 0.85% of the base sales tax of everything that's out there, plus the 0.2% for transportation benefit. And I think that helps when we're able to point people in the direction of our tax rate tables. And so I can do that for this, too. It just, it's it's a little later in the year by the time we get it, so I can update that for sure.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Barb? Okay, then with that, I will open for public comment from the audience on this particular topic. So is anybody online?
No, but I just want to make the announcement again real quick. If you would like to speak to the city council and you are on in our attendees on Zoom regarding ordinance 1206, the property tax, please raise your digital hand. I do not see anybody.
Okay, thank you. Any public comments on this topic in the room? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of this hearing. Any further comment by staff? Any further questions from council? Okay, if, and as I understand it, oh, I thought you were making a move. Okay. So as I understand it, we are looking for an approval of ordinance number.
I would move to adopt ordinance number 1206, authorizing collection of property tax levy for 2026 and setting the property tax levy amount.
Oh, wait, I have to close the public hearing first.
You already did.
Close it. Okay, it's closed. Got a motion to have a second. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Councilmember, you in for the second?
Yeah, okay. All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. The ordinance has been approved. That takes us on to our next public hearing, which, pull it up here really quick.
Sorry, I just think I just changed the direction here.
Okay, so this next public hearing will be on the 2026 Annual Budget. This is the first public hearing, and the ordinance is ordinance 1205. And I could tell a joke really quick. Oh, okay.
Dragon dropped and got out of order. Sorry.
Sorry. I was just kidding, I don't have any good jokes.
Come on. Yeah, so this will be the first reading, and we'll do the second reading next meeting. I'm sure Barb will talk about that.
So just to be clear, there's no action expected on this, it's just the first public reading, and then second reading with potential action will be next week.
Yeah, the the action, though, after this will be to.
Approve the reading.
Approve the reading.
First reading, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, we are here. Thank you, council. So this is the first public hearing on the 2026 budget, as Clerk Chellin had stated. This will be the first reading, so we will have another reading next week. So this is a basic look at our budget process timeline for any of those who have not been part of our budget process this budget cycle. It starts with the priority discussions with the mayor and council early in the year, and then we create the base budget, and we utilize a six-year forecast for planning purposes. Revenues are projected based on trends, data from outside sources like Washington City's Insurance Authority, Association of Washington Cities, Municipal Research Service Centers, utilizing their annual budgets suggestions and revenue expectation guides. Expenditures are based on current staffing levels and current programs, and then levels of service with some initial increases for costs, cost increases like fuel costs and communication. By late August, all requests are compiled and provided for presentation to the city administrator and the mayor, and then ready for council discussions. As you know, we went through a number of council discussions this year, so those occur throughout September and into October, and then lead up to public hearings where we are now. This slide lays out the city funds by type, which regulate sources and uses of funding. Since there only can be one current expense fund in governmental accounting, the orange colored current expense funds, the all of the funds underneath that general fund are all rolled up into that general fund for for tracking purpose and reporting and budgeting. So those additional fund types, we have special revenue funds, includes the street fund, transportation benefit, we have debt service funds, governmental capital funds, so all the funds in there are used for capital projects, enterprise utility type funds, internal service funds, which are used for basically for saving funding, saving money for capital, equipment, and sometimes software hardware, and then we have custodial trust funds as well. There's an explanation of these funds and types included in the annual budget book, which you can find online. These are our 2026 budget priorities, and these do align with our long-term strategic priorities. We have public safety, that's always top of our minds. This year, we intend to implement traffic safety camera program and traffic safety program, information technology, safeguard our data, and do some critical system support. Maintain infrastructure and programs, including maintaining levels of service and encouraging innovative process improvement to increase efficiencies and reduce costs. This is a look at our citywide budget by fund. It includes our beginning balances, revenues, expenditures, and ending balances. And they're, they are grouped by fund type. As I mentioned, our 000 general funds, this does include our managerial funds. And it includes departments like your administration, your police, planning, community, and development, and parks. Next, we have grouped in gray, those are our special revenue funds, as I mentioned, the street fund and transportation benefit, also municipal arts and drug seizure funds. Grouped in white, we have our debt service funds, those are obviously used to track and pay debt service, and we have our capital project funds. Enterprise funds, 400 funds, those include our stormwater and sewer. We do still maintain a sewer fund with the only source of revenue from the district. It's from the district for debt service for loans that we have on their behalf for the sewer treatment plant. Then we have those internal service 500 funds that I had mentioned, again, to accumulate resources generally for equipment. And then the treasure trust fund, that's a pass-through of revenues that don't belong to the city, that's things like state portion of our court fees, excise taxes, things that we collect and then pass on. This is a look at our revenues, citywide, we'll start with revenues. As you can see, taxes make up the majority of our revenues, citywide, 48%. And we'll take a closer look at taxes on our next slide. Charges for services include things like zoning and subdivision permits, impact fees, traffic impact fees, park impact fees, those are for capital purposes. And then stormwater fees utilized for our enterprise stormwater fund. Intergovernmental, this includes grant revenues and state shared revenues, those are based on populations, things like motor vehicle fuel tax, marijuana and liquor taxes, those are all based on population, and there is more information about those in our annual budget book as well. So all of these revenues, this is how we pay for everything from capital to operations, hiring officers, maintaining parks, paving streets, keeping the lake and streams clean. So this is the closer look at the citywide tax revenues by type and funds. Property tax makes up 28% of taxes citywide and is allocated to the general and street funds. Sales tax makes up 41%, includes criminal justice, affordable housing, construction sales tax, which is held in the general reserve fund, and then the transportation benefit program tax, which is in a special revenue fund. Utility taxes now make up 23% of total revenues, and those are allocated to the general and street funds. Utility taxes going to the street fund includes those on solid waste, which is garbage, and the sewer. REIT or real estate excise taxes make up 8%, and those are held in a separate in separate capital funds for capital purposes. And then other taxes include things like leasehold excise taxes and gambling taxes, which are much smaller dollar amounts. So we'll pivot over to general fund revenues by type. We're looking at budgeted revenues in the general fund are approximately 24.9 million in 2026, and this does include all of the managerial funds as well. Again, here, taxes are the largest resource. We saw on the earlier slide that taxes make up 48% of the total citywide revenues, they actually make up 73% of the general fund. Retail sales tax is the largest portion at 33%, and property tax is just slightly lower at 32. The intergovernmental revenues show a decrease from prior year, but likely increase when unused grant funds are rolled forward in the first part of the year. As I mentioned, those are grant funds, and we show them all coming in the year that we approve that, and then we just roll them forward into the future years as needed. Interfund transactions also see a decrease. These are transfers or contributions from one to another, and in this case, it's from the managerial funds to the main operating funds. We're reducing the transfers in 2026 by changing how we process payroll for permit-related staff time. You'll see the corresponding decrease in the general fund expenses as well. And at the bottom of this table, we have miscellaneous, which includes investment interest, and we do estimate a 10 to 15% decrease due to the changing market. Overall, we're anticipating receiving slightly more revenues in 2025 than we currently budgeted, due to the increase in construction-related sales tax and building permits. And that is a trend that we do anticipate will continue. And that is a trend that we do anticipate will continue into 2026 with the building of the schools. Continuing with citywide expenditures, this is by department. This chart includes operating capital and debt expenses. Public works in the yellow makes up the largest portion at 36%. Park and rec is 12% and general government makes up 21%. These three include significant amounts of capital, between 40 and 60% of their total is capital. Law enforcement in blue makes up 19%. Wow, those blues are really close together. The blue at the bottom makes up 19% of the total citywide expenditures. But the next slide will show they make up significantly more of the total wages and benefits citywide. Here, admin is in the green and that includes elected officials, admin, municipal services division, finance, human resources, and IT, and makes up 7% of the expenditure citywide. Move over to citywide expenses by type. So the 2025 estimated ending expenditures are down approximately 16.5 million from the budgeted amount. 78% of this is capital and then 8% is wages and benefits and that's approximately 1.3 million of that. Citywide expenditures for 2026 are budgeted at 66.5 million. Staffing makes up the largest portion of that at 38%, with capital at 30% and operations, which includes supplies and services, at about 17%. So supplies include every non-capital thing that we purchase from tools, computers, salt for the roads, as well as office supplies like pens and paper. And then services include a very wide array of things as well, like architectural and engineering consultants, janitorial services, software renewal costs, audit fees, utility bills, vehicle repair. So all non-capital things the city consumes to provide governmental services to the community. This chart shows the wages and benefits by department and it breaks out the street stormwater facilities division of public works. So as I mentioned in the previous slides, although law enforcement makes up only 19% of total citywide expenditures, they make up 38% of the total wages and benefits and then significantly higher than the next closest at 13%, which is stormwater division of public works. Community development and the six departments that we include in administration each make up 12% of the total. Community development does have an increase slightly over the past year as we began to allocate administrative overhead to the permit managerial funds as we've been talking about. And then in the bottom right of this slide, we have the cost of living increases. We have 2.44% for nonrepresented, this is 90% of CPIW, this is our common practice. The guild commission have a 3% increase in their current contract. Guild non-commissioned is at the 90% of CPIW as well, at 2.44%. And then the Teamsters are currently in negotiations. Theirs will have to come back as an amendment later. So now looking at the expenditures and the general operating funds. So as noted on this slide, this does include the permit and rental managerial funds as those are both used for operating expenses and include staffing. The reserve account and the pandemic recovery funds aren't included in this. As you can see from the chart, staffing, wages and benefits makes up 71% of the general fund expenses. I've highlighted a few things of note in the table from left to right. There is a 6% decrease from 2025 budget to 2025 estimated and this is due to reduced spending and holding positions vacant. Next, law enforcement makes up 46% of general operating expenses. As I mentioned, overall expenses, 19% of citywide, wages and benefits, 38, and general fund is actually 46. So we talk about how much the, the, the public safety is in, in the city and how much police. And so looking at it in different ways kind of gives a different perspective of how much we do put into the police department here in Lake Stevens. Then community development actually shows a 34% decrease and that is due to that change in payroll processing, as I mentioned during the revenue discussion, that's the correlating reduction as we no longer need a budget transfer of cash between the permit managerial fund and the general fund for wages. And then overall, there's a 3% decrease in expense budget in 2026 over the 2025 estimated. It is a 9% decrease over the 2025 budget. This is due to continued efforts to reduce the general fund expenses overall. Moving over into the street and stormwater funds now, as those are the two other major funds in the city. And we'll start with the revenue side on streets. The largest portion of street fund revenues are taxes, making up 73% of revenues. Property tax allocation has been reduced, so now it makes up 25% of the total revenues in the fund and utility taxes is 48. Motor vehicle fuel taxes are the proportional share of state shared imposed fuel taxes based on population and are at 22%. And just a reminder, motor vehicle fuel taxes based on gallons purchased versus dollars cost of, of gas. So the more that's purchased, the higher the tax is. So on the expenditure side, wages and benefits make up 59% or $2.6 million. Services at 25% of the budget and that includes continuing programs like pavement preservation, striping sidewalks, and additional traffic safety programs. Looking at stormwater funds includes the operating budget, the capital project fund as well as the debt service fund. Capital fund receives revenue through interfund transfers from the operating fund as well as grants and a public works trust fund loan for the 36th street bridge project. Looking at revenues, we have storm drainage is the largest revenue source. It's based on a 3% annual increase and additional small 1% for population growth estimates. Interfund transfers are 15% of the revenues and are mostly the transfers between the operating funds and the capital and debt funds. So you'll see that on both the revenue and expenditure side. Expenses are approximately 10.5 million, wages and benefits are 31%, approximately 2.2, 3.2 million. Capital's at 32% and then services, which include this year alum and weed abatement programs are 14%. This is an overview of the changes this budget cycle. So there's two new positions in the 2026 proposed budget, including an IT applications data analyst and a traffic engineer. Both positions will further the city's strategic priorities of public safety and securing our information infrastructure. The IT analyst is set to be hired in quarter two while the traffic engineers recommend to start quarter one and that position will be 100% funded through the traffic safety program revenues. This is the proposed organizational chart for 2026. There are a total of 137 full-time, three-part-time, 14 seasonal intern positions and that does not include the eight elected officials. The two new positions are color-coded green here. This is a list of our items and programs included in the proposed budget. We have items like AED, first aid equipment, emergency operation costs, some required new code books, increase in park operating costs, just based on the number of parks we have. We are continuing the contribution to the senior center as well as to the volunteers of America. We have pavement preservation software in the streets fund, increasing some engineering professional services costs, continuing some required updates, fee evaluations, and again, as I mentioned, the alum treatment and stormwater. We have some shared equipment purchases planned as well as some data center upgrades and some vehicle replacements. So the chart shows the expenses by fund, police equipment has the largest portion due to ongoing fleet replacement program. And as I mentioned, the 163, 1,000, I'm sorry, 163,500 in the general fund, 30,000 is to continue this part of the senior center and then 95 is to contribution to the volunteers of America. Both are set at the same level as they were this year. The remaining increase is the general fund, I'm sorry, I think that's 65,000 that is to the, to the volunteers of America, I need to double check what that is, but I think it's 65,000. And then the remaining increase in the general fund operating is mostly parks due to adding more park amenities, as I mentioned. Those numbers weren't adding up, they weren't mathing. So this leads us into our 2026 capital improvement plan. So there's 30 projects included in the budget, 27 of those are multi-year projects, 23 were partially funded in 2025. We have 12 transportation-related projects, 10 park and restoration, three facilities and five stormwater projects. The total capital budget for 2026 is 27,000, 27,324,000. As mentioned, the majority of the projects were multi-year projects budgeted in 2025. So any unused budget not already accounted for in the 2026 budget will likely be rolled forward in an amendment in the beginning of the year. So this is a list of the, the transportation and stormwater projects we have. Those color-coded in the left column in yellow, those indicate projects that are eligible for transportation benefit program funding. Those, some of these projects are fully funded without using TBP or transportation benefit program funds due to grants or other available funding sources, which does help the transportation benefit program funding go further. So this is just a look at that. We have approximately $8 million in transportation and 2.3 million in the stormwater. And these are our park and facility projects budgeted in 2026. You have approximately 4.5 million in perks and then 12.3 million in the facilities. And this does include our municipal service campus and museum. These are partially funded through bonds, grants, and some capital service funds. So this is just look at the capital project budgets by fund. So this does add up to more than the 2026 budget is includes various grants that will be rolled forward. So they get used over multiple years, not just fully in 2026. As you can see, we have nearly 14 million in grants for various projects and we continually seek out more for those projects that we have in process and in the planning stages. That brings us to the conclusion of the first 2026 budget.
I like your playlist at the end.
Yeah, walk-off music.
That's right.
Okay.
I just, I want to add your VOA at 65,000, I think is correct. That's what I remember from last year.
Perfect, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, any questions for Barb?
I noticed you had sewer utility tax estimated a million two, I thought I saw a million 350 something.
It's, it's in there.
Okay.
It's based on whatever they're, I mean, I know they're talking about increasing their rates and what that will look like and that as they increase their rates, it increases the tax, so.
Right, right.
So we'll see.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Barb, is the fuel tax per gallon based on what is sold in our city or is that a return back from the state and it's averaged out?
Return back from the state, based on population.
Based on population, got it. Then the second one, this might be more of a gene question. Month or two ago, we talking about our ILA with Snowmush County DEM and they were proposing to us a reduction in service or an increase in the per capita. Do you know where that is? Just curious.
I don't know the answer to that.
Director Warington, in charge of your risk management.
Yes, so there was a DEM advisory board meeting a few days ago and the city voted no to increase fees per the mayor. So we will be, it sounds like our fees will not increase for 2026, but we will need to have conversations about what will happen in the future.
Okay. And then Barb, you didn't include my favorite graph, which is the red line, black line convergence.
I did not. Those are estimates into the future and although they're used for planning purposes up to this stage, they are not part of the actual 2026 budget.
No, I just.
You know, that's one of those places that you and I disagree.
Yeah, I just, I just, I like, I like the, I like the visual. So I guess my concern with this budget is, is, I'll just be quick. My preference is we don't add staff. And the reason is, is I'm not a doom and gloom, but our economy is softening. It's clear. And what I don't want to do is to put next year's council in a position where my favorite graph does come true in 2028 where those lines flip and we are now marching through our, our reserves to a zero balance. So that's just my preference, I understand I don't get to vote on that, but good job on the budget. Thank you for your hard work and for all the staff.
Thank you, councilmember Hilt.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got one. Trying to find the slide. Oh, here it is. The Teamsters is in negotiations. Do we have any kind of a placeholder in the budget right now about what it might be for the Teamsters?
The placeholder I have in there is the 2.44%. This is a basic, that way it's not a complete increase going from zero to whatever it ends up being.
And do we see this being, the negotiation being done before we have to adopt a budget?
I will defer to your HR director?
No.
It will go into the first.
This might require, might require right away in 2026, a budget amendment.
Yeah, that's probably, probably, I would assume.
Thank you.
And Barb, I just wanted to thank you for all your work. That was very easy to follow, very easy to read, thank you.
You did all the hard work already.
Okay, there are no other questions then, I will go ahead and open for public comment from the audience. We'll go ahead and make your announcement.
If you are on Zoom and you'd like to speak to the public hearing on the 2026 budget, ordinance 1205, please raise your digital hand. No one?
All right, thank you. Anybody in the audience that would like to offer public comment on this topic only? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing. Any further comment from staff? Further questions or comment from council? Okay, then just to be clear, they're asking for a motion to approve the first reading of the 2026 budget and first reading of ordinance number 1205.
So moved.
Second.
Kelly, did you get the second? Okay, got a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
One nay.
I think I saw Angie mouth aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
I'm opposed as well.
One nay, two nays.
So just, just to be clear, this is not the budget, this is just the reading of the budget? You're opposing the reading of the budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, two nays or one?
Two.
Councilmember Hilt?
Yes.
And councilmember Young?
Councilmember President Donahue, the public will have the opportunity to speak at the next public hearing as well on the budget.
Correct, on the 25th, yes, per Barb's beautiful slide.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so with that, the first, the first reading of budget and the ordinance are approved. And then I will close, or I did that out of order, closing the public hearing.
It's okay.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to item 12, action items, the only one being ordinance 1208, dissolving the Lake Stevens Veteran Commission, to which I understand councilmember Hilt would like to speak.
Sure, so my, my outgoing hurrah. So 2017 or so, the city was curious if we had, if there was any municipal value or if there's any value in municipal, local municipality to have a, how we could interact in the veteran environment. And so we came to the conclusion that yes, there was. And we partnered with a 501(c)(3) out of Edmonds, Operation Military Family and we formed a commission that was based, had community members and it also had up to three council members. And we also got some seed money from Operation Military Family. And so we hired a, we actually had Operation Military Family did an assessment of the veteran environment, number of veterans in our city. And also, you know, they were, they're well-connected in the region, so some of that information, we, we knew what was going on in our neighboring cities. And so we operated, I think robustly for about four or five years. We had a few programs that we were able to initiate and we succeeded at that. But what we did discover is that the private organizations, the county and the state were already fulfilling some of the mission that we could and were able to fill as a city. And so we felt that, it became quite obvious that we were just duplicative of, of that. And so we stopped meeting in 2022 about. And since then, this has just been something that's been sitting on the books. So I'm proud of the work that we did. I think it was appropriate at the time that the city did step into that environment, that ecosystem, and explore what it could do, but it's also become clear that its course has come, its course is run, and the time has come to dissolve that, that Veterans Commission. And I think that's, that's okay. We did our work, it served its purpose and now it's time to close that. So I'm, we'll make a motion after, I think Kim wants to like to speak, that we do dissolve the Lake Stevens Veteran Commission.
Yeah, I think that the Veterans Commission did what it was supposed to do for the, for the short time that we were actually operative. the short time that we were actually operative. It was Councilmember Hill, myself and Councilmember Marcus, Marcus Tagent that were on the, from the council on that commission. There were several people on the commission from outside the council. We met once a month, just like most commissions, and we did some pretty good stuff. But what we did, one of the things that we fell down on, I believe, is we were not able to find a way of getting the veterans of the city involved with us. And what we found was like Kirk said, is that there is those services and those things that are being done with it by the veterans is already being covered by others. And one of the major ones is, is the, in Lake Stevens, is the veteran, is the Legion. And we had Legionnaires that were on the commission with us. But it has come to light, especially during COVID, it was, we basically had to put it on the back burner, like many things have had to happen during COVID. And we, it just never picked up. And it is, it's time. And one of the things that's important to understand about that is sometimes governments look at doing things to try to help citizens in a, in a certain area. Doesn't matter whether it's sidewalks, or doesn't matter if it's a Veterans Commission, doesn't matter if it's a social program. Sometimes those things that we try don't work. And this one didn't work as well as we thought it was going to work. So it's time to put it to bed.
Any other thoughts from our council? I would like to admonish our new council members that are coming on board. It's okay to take a risk as a council member. Sometimes we want to be, just follow the rules and sit here and come to our meetings. It's okay to be bold. And at the time, we were bold. We were the only one, and still the only one in the state, or city in the state that had a Veterans Commission and one of, I think, 17 throughout the United States, which was part of the problem we had. We didn't have a benchmark. We didn't have peers that we could look at. So my admonishment to you is if you find a way to help, use your position here. It's a unique position. It's a position of authority. Don't abuse it clearly. But be bold, be brave, get community support and go out and try new things. And also be humble enough to recognize that if it's time has come, or if it's failing, or if it's harmful, then change course. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 1208, dissolving the Lake Stevens Veteran Commission.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Could I just add one more thing? I just want to say, just to be clear, this does not mean the city doesn't support our veterans in any way, shape, or form. The American Legion has really stepped up. We've recently cleaned our war memorial and updated some of the placards on it. So please don't read any of this to mean we don't support our veterans, because we very much do. It just was determined that this particular commission was no longer needed.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ordinance 1208 is approved. Both of you, thank you for your work on that.
Council President, I'm hearing that staff needs about 15 minutes for the last item.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to do a motion to extend now, or just wait and see how it goes?
I don't know, Russ, what do you think?
I'm assuming council is going to have some discussion on a couple of things. They asked for some discussion staff. So I will just make that a little longer.
Okay, so I want to extend to eight, 10. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to extend to eight, 10.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, meeting is extended to eight, 10. Russ, take it away.
I'm leaving eight. I have a hard stop at eight, so I'm.
Okay.
So.
There's two.
Christie and I are going to.
We'll stay and listen to you.
Tonight, so Christie's going to get started.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, City Council. Kristi Schmidt, Planning Manager. As Russ noted, we're going to be co-hosting the presentation this evening. Within your packet, we are going to be talking about three different items tonight. First will be traffic and concurrency, the traffic impact fee with concurrency, then a briefing on the capital facilities, the 2025 So within your packet, you have six items this evening. And I do want to apologize, you had originally received the Planning Commission's last work session on Attachment 1 and 2. You were just recently forwarded the correct versions, having changes since then based on Planning Commission and staff. There's about five changes between attachments one and two. So I did want to point that out to you. Background information on how we got to where we are here today is that we are implementing the revisions adopted by the City Council in the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. Last year, the city did contract with the engineering specialists, that would be Transpo Engineering, to help staff with the technical updates and revisions to our administrative documents that the community and development community utilize with their land use applications. So far to date, we've held three work sessions with the Planning Commission. There is a public hearing scheduled for tomorrow night on the 19th. And we've currently had one, and tonight will be the second work session with council. The 60-day notice was issued to the state, the Department of Commerce, on October 3rd. And the last time we were before you with this item was for the fee resolution, and that was last month in October. We did a work session with the traffic impact fee. There was discussions regarding that. At that particular meeting, staff had recommended a 40% reduction to TIZ 1. And we agreed, based on council input, that we would come back before the council in about a month. And that is part of our proposal tonight that we will discuss later in the presentation. The purpose of the amendments is what we're looking at doing is to redefine our currency standards to match our comprehensive plan. We're also incorporating in best industry standard practices for the multimodal street and sidewalk standards. And along with this, we are working currently with Public Works as they update their ed standards. And then later in 2026, we'll also be looking at updating our street and parking standards. We are updating our traffic impact fee methodology, along with using the latest ITE manual, which is ITE manual 12. And we are also updating the six-year and 20-year CIP list, and also adopting new definitions and terminology to match the state statutes. And what I will do is I go through each section. I'm going to pause. And if there's any questions from the council, please feel free, if you want to have staff discussion at that time. So the first topic we're going to talk about for overview tonight is the concurrency and traffic impact fee code amendments. So the first one is section 14110. This is our concurrency management system. The items that I just mentioned previously are pretty much the same things that we're incorporating into the concurrency. We're looking at the new level of service, clarifying exemptions, adding new terminology, adding in the multimodal, along with updating our level of service.
And so I'm just going to jump in here. So the, the two key differences between the packet you received and the correct attachment, a couple of the revisions were how the administrative section was handled, trying to create parity between the streets chapter and the concurrency chapter. And then there had been a section in your current packet that has some language about sewer concurrency. That's removed because the city is not in charge of making those determinations. All we need for concurrency is the letter of availability. So those are the, the two big changes. And there is some minor housekeeping conditions throughout, but those are the two big differences.
Thank you for that, Russ. So if you, if you had the opportunity to look at your concurrency handbook, this is an item that is online. If you are a traffic engineer, and if you're working with a private developer, you will utilize this document as you prepare your traffic impact analysis to be submitted to the city. That tells us what type of impacts you have on levels of service and intersections and infrastructure within the city. So this is a technical manual, and it is a resource document for traffic engineers and applicants. In addition to our concurrency, we're adding something new that we'll be starting utilizing in 2026. We are adding in a concurrency certificate. This is essentially a reservation, much like our planned action threshold, where if a developer comes in with a proposal or application, they can reserve their, their development and their level of trips that they have. So they have that with their projected impacts on those intersections. And in addition, we're going to be utilizing, or proposing to utilize a tracking matrix for staff to track all new development. So what we will do as we go through the year with development, we will provide an annual report to the council about the time of budget. And what this will do is it'll identify any intersections that have reached or getting close to a 75% level of service threshold. So that allows us to say, okay, ding, 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 this intersection, it needs to be moved up to our six-year CIP. And that's when we would utilize traffic impact fees that have been collected to make those improvements to address a potential future lack of level of service. Any questions on concurrency before I move on to the traffic impact fee section? Okay, seeing none, I'm just going to move ahead. Background information as far as traffic impact fees, we refer to that as TIF. So you'll see that throughout the PowerPoint, the TIF. We went ahead and we briefed City Council at the last update back in October regarding the fees. We proposed a TIF based on the projects within the comprehensive plan. That's our 20-year list. And what we did is we provided an impact fee schedule, and we'll show that later here in the presentation with our comparable cities and where the proposed staff recommendation puts us on that matrix. We have received one comment from the master builders, and that was back in October. And then since then, they were forwarded the recent packet, but we have yet to receive a comment from them. So I would anticipate we would receive something within the next day or so before the public hearing before the Planning Commission tomorrow. So staff has agreed to reassess the CIP projects and reevaluate the traffic impact fees. Council was interested in seeing some examples, so we have quite a few of those, or three actually here later in the presentation. As you can see, I'm just going to ask Russ a quick question, so I'm going to turn it over to him in a second. Okay, got a couple more slides there. All right. Thank you, Russ. So as we move forward to the next section, we're looking at some updates for definitions. We're adding some new clarification. So our code does match our state statutes. And that would be in section 1408 of the code. Section 14112 is our traffic impact fee revisions. We've gotten to this point by, we're looking at taking an update to our traffic impact fee methodology. We're incorporating in the latest ITE generation, and that is how many trips would a particular land use generate? We've got.
Key differences, again, going back to what you have in your packet. Again, really minor differences in the administrative section has been updated. And there was a section in there that related to station areas in reference to transit that has been removed because we don't have any qualifying station areas in the city that that regulation would have applied to. So that was removed out of the version that you have in front of you tonight.
In case you are curious on where the closest station is, that would be across the trussel in the city of Everett. Here's the map that shows the city's traffic impact zones. As you can see, we do have three of them. TIZ 1 is blue, 2 is green, and 3 is red. These have been redefined to, for our city limits and our urban growth area. And then should and if an additional area be annexed into the city limits, as we do have currently an annexation area before the city council, this area does actually get amended into the adjacent TIZ zone. So that would be TI zone 3. Looking at our traffic impact fee developers worksheet, this is a popular one. It's used by all our developers, everyone from a short plat on up as far as our type 2 development applications up to type 5. This has been updated by our traffic consultant. It more accurately reflects, and it helps people so you can fill it out so it mathematically matches up with our methodology. And this is how we determine the amount of our impact fee, which is collected. And with this, I'll pass it over to Director Wright.
Okay, before we move ahead, were there any questions on the traffic impact fee chapter updates? Okay, this is where we get into the heavier information that the City Council had wanted some additional feedback on. So the, the traffic impact fee or TIF cost basis, that's the methodology we use to collect traffic impact fees based on the projects in our capital facilities plan, looking at some pass-by rebates, a pretty wide formula to get us down to what are the eligible costs. So the eligible costs are those projects that are system improvements. They're not maintenance projects. So for example, asphalt replacement is not eligible for a TIF credit, but creating a new turn pocket from an arterial onto a collector to maintain level of service, or new multimodal projects, adding sidewalks, et cetera, those are qualifying projects. So that's really what we're trying to do. And this methodology document, it's been updated since 2012, and it really sets that legal framework for the city again to determine what is an eligible project for us to collect impact fees on. Excellent. So at the, the last council meeting, we had shared with you the overall impact fees and the impact fee that our consultant had shown us for TIZ 1. That's the northeastern part of the city was going to be over $11,000. TIZ 2 and 3, respectively $4,200 and $5,100. So that's, those are the areas really on the western part of the city, on the western side of the lake. So staff went back and looked at, how do we bring those, the cost of those down? And we need some input from council tonight on some of these options so we can complete this methodology handbook and have it ready for your public hearing in a few weeks. So option one, those are just the standard fees. Those are all of the projects in our 20-year plan. Option two is a revised cost estimate. So under option two, what we did is we specifically looked at TIZ 1, myself and the Public Works Director to identify, how can we do projects differently? Can we phase some projects? Can we look at different delivery methods? So say in some areas, we might do a shared walkway or path versus doing two independent sidewalks on both sides of the road, looking at road widths. One of the biggest projects we looked at was the Grade Road Boulevard. That is a project that came out of our downtown subarea plan, and that project alone was a $39 million project. And within the limits of that project, there are a lot of existing areas of sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera, that would have been all removed. So we really looked hard at that project to see how we could right-size that one and phase that project. So anyway, we looked at about eight projects with 25 to 50% cost reductions in each of those, those projects. And with option two, we believe it's probably the option we're recommending to council. It strikes the balance between making sure we have the funds we need to construct our infrastructure. But as I said, we've also looked at how do we deliver those in a more efficient manner? And it also recognizes that there is an impact to development. Option three is a further revision of the methodology. And the big difference between option two and three is all projects, we took a 25% reduction to, in addition to these larger reductions. And we also removed those eight projects. We sort of zeroed them out and said, we'll get to those at some point. That's a riskier strategy, especially when we look for grant funding or matching funds. If we don't have those projects allocated and funded, it's going to be harder to fund those if an opportunity comes up of some specific type of grant. So that's why we're recommending option two. Again, we think it provides the, the flexibility that the council was looking for and really looks hard at how to deliver projects. So moving on, I will also show you an update to what are So moving on, I will also show you an update to what do our peer cities look like? Christie's been able to look at some of the other cities. And what we found is, you know, we're we're on par with most of the other cities. If we look at the city of Lynwood, who is our best comparable for the way they run their traffic program, we're actually a little bit less than Lynwood. And our combined projects for T I Z two and three, this was a council question, can those be put together? The answer is yes, and that's what we currently do. Both T I Z two and three are affected by state route nine and highway two. So there's a lot of interplay between those areas and those fees can be averaged and used for projects in either area where T I Z one, you really can't, it doesn't have that same impact on the other two zones.
And Russ, do you want to read the city of Everett fees? Because I did notice it's cut off on my screen and it's also showing cutoff on the projection screen.
Appreciate that. I won't go through all of the numbers, but what the city of Everett does for commercial projects are sixty three hundred dollars. And then the city of Everett breaks down their traffic impact fees by land use type. So they're going to range anywhere from on the low of thirty six hundred dollars for an A D U to a high of twenty four thousand dollars for a fourplex. So it's a much more complicated formula and one that we're not trying to replicate. But the the big takeaway from this is with the proposed updates to the traffic fees and looking at some of the ways to do discounts in T I Z one, we're on par with our our peer and neighbor cities. So with that, I'm going to pause and I'd like some feedback from the council since that was one of your big questions when we talked about the fees resolution. You wanted more information on the methodology. You've seen the complete document now, what that looks like and staff's recommendation on how to bring those fees down to what we believe is a reasonable measure. But council can also decide that you want to fully fund all of these projects at the higher number. So that's really council's discretion and looking for some feedback.
So really quick, just looking at the time, happy to extend if anyone has any substantive questions they want to go into. But if everyone agrees with the staff recommendation of option two, we can also do that. So let's start with the threshold question. Anyone feel we need to extend, have some discussion?
So the process, you're going to planning commission tomorrow night with this proposal? And then you're coming back to council for adoption?
Council will hold their own public hearing. The difference in between the two bodies is council controls the budgetary items and the planning commission will really only be acting on the code changes to one, ten and one, twelve.
So you're looking for adoption of this sometime in December?
Yes.
First meeting?
Is the date.
December ninth.
Ten is the schedules.
I get, just quickly, I'm looking at transpose traffic study appendix A. I mean, we have a big controversy as to South Lake Stevens Road and South Davies Road. And recollection was that there was a mistake made or something in that regard to the level of service at that intersection. And it was documented incorrectly. Is that what I'm remembering?
There was discussion between the the data that transpo used and what some traffic consultants had used for development projects. So we did find out they were using two different data sets. And that has been rectified. And so we are moving forward with the numbers in our comprehensive plan.
That is in appendix A?
Is that the correct?
Of the transpost study, level of service summary?
I believe that is correct, but I would like to double check that and look through that in order to verify that for you, council member.
I guess the reason why I'm asking this is, I mean, there's I can't even count the number of intersections that are impacted here. It's probably twenty five, maybe thirty. The the worst level of service indicated right now is level service C, which I think in the public's view is probably hard to believe in the sense that we have major traffic impacts in our city. A level of services C is essentially, you know, no impact.
Yeah.
And so and especially when you get down the South Lake Stevens Road down there, Machias and so forth. And I, you know, I'm just kind of mystified as to this is a pretty tough sell. I mean, it's, our populace does not agree with this study. And so how do you rectify that?
So I'll start by saying I'm not trying to rectify that tonight. I'm providing you the information. The project intersections are consistent over the last two comprehensive plans. I mean, those are the the projects we need to build to have free flowing traffic over the next twenty years. The the perception is is different than the reality and traffic engineering is sort of a hard thing to explain what the intersection delays mean. But these are, you know, again, the identified projects that also the community is asking for. How do we have a a fully functional transportation system? So.
Well, again, if you're asking for, if you document that existing traffic service levels, level of service is anywhere from A to C, how can you justify a traffic impact mitigation fee? If things are operating.
It's looking out over the planned twenty year horizon, the growth needed and the.
And I'm also looking at twenty forty four column, which doesn't change much. There's only one, two, three, four, five that entered into the category of of D or E with F being gridlock. So how do you, how do you justify when basically in a twenty year horizon, there's essentially no change to the traffic according to this chart?
Right, and that's predicated on several of those improvements being constructed. And they're not just intersection improvements that form the capital facilities plan. There's roadway improvements, there's multimodal bike improvements, sidewalks. So it's a larger package than just intersections. Just the level of service is measured at intersections and that gets to the concurrency less than it gets to the the transportation system.
So really quick, we are at eight fifteen, so if we want to keep going, we do need a motion at this point, so.
No, that's fine. I get, just one clarify, clarifying question, Russ. On the future twenty forty four, there's some areas that are documented as existing level of service twenty forty four without improvements and then it's showing with improvements and there's no data.
Okay.
What? Can you briefly explain that?
Sorry, really quick, I'm getting daggers here from the clerk's desk. I make a motion that we extend to eight twenty.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, got five more minutes.
The the data would be in the model that they ran. And that, I don't know that the model is shown in its entirety in the plan, just the summary of results. But I have your questions written down so we can come back and provide
Okay, great.
More information on
Okay.
this, but we just, we do still need some direction. If council has a direction on how they handle the concurrency so we can complete that work or at least revise it to bring it back to you.
My two cents is continue with your with your recommendation and then give council member Peter Hagan. I mean, that's like, I I share his question. You've you've presented, I mean, I I don't buy it either. But the data you presented suggests that there is no change or significant change.
Yeah, the only thing that I'm questioning is is this particular level of service that they have in here and we have other we have other people that are doing these traffic surveys and are coming up with several of these these places that are level F. So I don't understand what the difference is. And we had one that we've discussed is they're showing as a level B. And we have one of the developers that says it's an F. So I don't, I don't get the difference. Is there, is there traffic engineers doing it wrong or is our consultant doing it wrong?
Suggesting that the different data sets were being used. One was using the old projections from our old comp plan that didn't look to the future of, you know, what are the impacts to the revised traffic model? So that's getting into sort of development level questions, but I will try to come back to the more cogent explanation for the council on the interrelationship of the the traffic. The the next piece that I'll run through quickly and I won't be able to hit all of the scenarios, but council had asked about fee reductions for affordable housing projects. Specifically, council member Dotree and Jorsted had asked about that. So we have prepared some scenarios for you. And again, sort of quickly with the the first scenario, what we did was what does it look like if for affordable housing projects, there's a hundred percent reduction of impact fees? And what we found at the extreme is that would be a six point three million dollar subsidy to affordable housing that would have to be budgeted back from other sources over the the twenty year planning horizon. If you take that down to what we're calling a likely to construct, that impact would be over, still over a million dollars in the the planning horizon. I'm going to go ahead and skip down to the next slide. So the next thing we we did was, so that was the hundred percent reduction, looking at our full build out between one and, you know, six million dollars. Then we're looking at what if that's on a sliding scale? That was sort of the other question from council. And if you look at those options and apply them across the board, and this is using the likely to construct, not the all in, then your impacts are going to range anywhere from, you know, seven hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars over the twenty year to just under two hundred thousand dollars on that sliding scale. And again, those fees, those subsidized fees have to be paid back into the traffic fund by another source. Next slide. So real life example, this is what council member Jorsted had asked for. So if you have, say, a hundred unit apartment, and here's two scenarios, one's three story, one's two story, that's going to have to be part of some sort of multi income project. And what you'd be looking at for impacts at the project level is going to be anywhere from six thousand for a three story to twenty six hundred rebate on the sliding scale and between thirty four hundred and eighty six hundred for a two story unit. They have different traffic rates that are applied to them, but that's sort of the the general calculus. Any questions, council member Jorstad on those examples and then council member Dotree?
No, this is very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate the the, you know, the the best case scenario or worst case scenario, depending on your, on what you're looking at versus what is a realistic scenario. So thank you for that.
Can you send this out to us so I can look at this a little closer?
Yes, and this isn't a decision you you have to make tonight. And then I'm just going to jump forward to a final slide, go to the capital facilities plan. So the other thing we just wanted to share with you, you've already seen your six year plan a couple of weeks ago. And as we're coming up on a hearing for the docket as well, just wanted to, it's a really light docket. It's only focused on the capital facilities plan, which is sort of why we talked about these different options on where those reductions might take place because those will affect the twenty year plan. Otherwise, in the capital facilities plans, all you're seeing is the intersection improvement that was discussed earlier at South Lake Stevens and Davies being added, you'll see cost adjustments across different capital facilities types. Those are needed to match the budget. The proposed revisions that we've talked about for traffic impact zone one and reconcile any differences with the transportation improvement plan. So I I recognize this was going to be a lot of information for council tonight, but I will look to you if you have any closing thoughts or comments tonight to give us direction on what you need.
My only comment would be if you're looking at a traffic mitigation fee, P M, peak hour of eleven thousand dollars, that's, I mean, as you demonstrated, it's way above any competing jurisdiction around us. It's, there's got to be some moderation to that.
Anything else? Going once, going twice, all right. Russ, does that and council member Hilt's comment give you enough to proceed?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, and with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So I'm a second.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's everybody, so no one's opposed. Thank you.